So welcome again to the Experts Online Music Special. My name is Johanna Boyer. I am a musicologist and I will be your moderator for this session. I have three expert speakers with me here today. Professor Skarsinski from Poland, Bianca Wirtner from Austria, and Bastian Senek from France. And I'm really excited about this interdisciplinary team and their expertise on this topic that they will be able to share with you. The first half of this session, we will hear from each of the speakers about their experience with music rehabilitation, music training, music therapy, music engagement. Because there are so many different forums. So we will hear about the experience with music rehabilitation for cochlear implant users. And in the second half of this session, we will have a roundtable discussion where you can ask your questions on the topic. But before we start, I want to share some participant tips. You might have heard them earlier already, or if you have attended an Experts Online in the previous months. So we would like you to please name yourself so we know who you are. And to avoid background noise, please mute your microphone. We also recommend that you close all other programs so you can have a stable internet connection. I would like you, if you have questions throughout the presentations or throughout the session, please simply type them in the chat. And either one of my colleagues will directly answer them, or I will bring them up during the roundtable and ask your question to our speakers. To kick off this Experts Online Music Special, I'd like to share a short video of a music activity involving cochlear implant users that you don't see very often. I had the pleasure to lead a choir workshop together with Bianca Wirtner in Saint-Polten, Austria, for 18 cochlear implant users. This choir workshop was a regional activity that happened over a weekend in June as part of the music festival. And you will get a sneak peek into our rehearsal. And you will see our brave participants. So let's share the video. Jetzt probieren wir es gemeinsam. Schauen wir mal, wie es herauskommt. Alle Platten gehen Männer wieder zusammen. Okay, thank you for sharing. And I think the next, what's up next is a Mentimeter question for you. So please share our Mentimeter question that we have prepared for you. And we would like to know from you, which music activities do you have at your clinic? You can either use the QR code with your phone to get to this question and provide an answer, or you can also type in the address of menti.com. So we'll keep this up for a few seconds or we'll jump forth and back. Again, we would like to know which music activities. So this could include maybe you have a music therapist, maybe you have a music program, maybe you do concerts, maybe you've had a music workshop. We would like to hear about that. How are you active in terms of music? So we can see some activities here. Many different activities. Three singing circles a day. Early musical education once a week with children. Singing, so I see singing quite here a bit. So maybe what I said earlier, that singing cochlear implant users is rather rare is not the case anymore because you report a lot of singing, which is really great. I would say that this definitely a more new development. You can see group sessions, Zumba, music workshops. That's quite a bit. You're quite active. So thank you so much for sharing this. And now I'm gonna go back to my screen. Now I would like to introduce my first speaker, Professor Skarsinski from the World Hearing Center Kajotani in Poland. Thank you so much, Professor Skarsinski, for joining us today and for sharing your experience and what happens at the World Hearing Center in regard to music.
Hope you see my screen.
Yes, I can see it.
Yeah. Good afternoon. Thank you very much for opportunity to share our experience from World Hearing Center. Honestly, when I'm a surgeon, so I'm mainly focused on surgery and that what is connected with qualification of patients of surgery and that's what was later. But for me, extremely, extremely important is that that the patient is non-user. So the patient use their device. We developed something wonderful that they could also play on instruments and the music is part of their life. Quite often, I found that it's very important for the people that the music is important. So since many, many years, it's the idea of my father. We have a festival, and we'll talk about that later. And that what is crucial for that. We need to define, do we have music therapy or do we have music training? Especially during pandemic, there was a lot of, you know, different music activities for a lot of patients with hearing impairments. It was possible via Zoom, via WhatsApp, or whatever. And it was a part of rehabilitation, which honestly increased in the number. So people started to, during the telemedicine consultation, said, yes, I cannot come for rehabilitation, but I have some music therapy or music training. Honestly, that's what we have with more or less music training. The definition of the music therapy is a lot. There were some conferences, there are some programs. There is a lot of programs. But when we go on, it's very specific. It's not so often meet. So we try to make that attractive. We want to build the sound awareness, listen, learning to listen. And this is especially from my point of view important for people, for example, with single-sided deafness, especially after COVID, when they need to really, you know, have different hearing on both ears and they want to be users. So it's quite important. And this is part of very important, not typical therapy, but the training. And you know, especially for the sounds, for them, they are favored. And when we look from that perspective, we need to divide what if you do it at home and in clinical rehabilitation center. We had the setup in, at our World Hearing Center with the wind instruments or other type instruments that people, they could come, they could play, they could take in group therapy. It's very special to be in the group therapy. So they could, you can see the images. They could, you know, look how other people, they try to use the music for their rehabilitation. And this is very important. But also, we try to say that there is something where they can find their idea of the life, that they could play good in the instrument. And quite often, it's for them very motivating. Sports is very motivating, but also music is very much motivating. And for that, a group of patients, especially for children, is very important to be, to have support of understanding of basic hearing, including that sound. And we have two options. During that training, they have passive music training and active. And we have more experience with active music training. It was started earlier, not for implanted patient, but for patient with central auditory processing disorder. So we connect that therapy for patient with central auditory disorders. So we had some experience with equipment on that, how to do this. And of course, from my perspective, it's much more effective. There is active participation, not only passive. Passive is maybe not only, but main reason for patients with some other neurological disorder. So we want to give that patient opportunity with some syndromes which are really very hard for, you know, other rehabilitation, especially on physical rehabilitation. So we want to give the passive training, but active training is extremely important. When we look for Creme de la Creme, that was from 2015. It was eighth edition of the Beats of Cochlea. So it's very important to present, not only for our society, for people who are in the game, but for people who are from decision makers, people from reimbursement, that what we are doing is not only surgery, is not only, you know, medical treatment, but there are people could be a member of normal social society of people and they could be between us. And it could be even better than people who are going to normal school, to normal university, because they could give something extra. And we have found that it's very interesting that that, let's say, channel of communication for, you know, for decision makers, for stakeholders and for society. People found it interesting. And I think this idea, I agree to hear that. After us in Russia, there was festival. There was festival in Austria. There are other festivals for people who are showing that the implants is not only rehabilitation, but is also effective. That rehabilitation are fantastic. And I hope also with the new processors, also it will be better and better. Thank you very much for your attention. I could not hear you.
Okay, I was muted. Okay, thank you, Professor Skarsinski, for sharing these insights. And I had the pleasure to take part in two of the Beats of Cochlear festivals. And I think what was wonderful for me to see is that the participants of the festival were so much more motivated to continue practice music and the impact that really had on them. So thank you for sharing this. We will take more questions for you later in our roundtable discussion. For now, I'm going to introduce our next speaker. And that is Bianca Wirtner from the University Clinic Saint-Polten. She's a music therapist and she will share her insights from her work. So please, Bianca, take it away.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to introduce you first, our implant team. Just a second. We have here our head of department, Mr. Georg Spindl, Dr. Gera Spindl, and our surgical team with Dr. Asid Magda. And we have seven speech therapists and audiologists and me as a music therapist. So in Austria, to be honest, music therapies isn't very often offered in different clinics. And as far as I know, in Austria, we're still the only clinic providing music therapy in outpatient way. And you know, we are offering music therapy in individual and group settings. And usually, I start one month after the first fitting. And independent of age, everybody can join music therapy. And I try to support them on different levels, actually. We have the functional level, where I'm trying to train and exercise with the CI users. And the very important level is the psychoemotional level, where they have the possibility to talk about problems and fears. So what I do is I use music as a therapeutic tool to communicate, to get in touch with people. So we have already heard, there are two main methods. There is the receptive one, where I'm playing for the CI users, and the active one, where we are playing and doing music together. So I also agree that's a very, very effective one, actually. So as I said before, we have this functional and the emotional level. And my main aim is to give an holistic way and holistic approach reaching people to get in touch with music. So on the functional level, we do exercises like melody, instrument recognition. We are doing exercising concerning the directional hearing and really musical oriented hearing training. And on the other side, it's very important, talks about their everyday problems, about their everyday life fears or illness or whatever. So what is also very important is the possibility to get digital media options. So they, we gave, we learn to use apps. We will hear about that later on. And so they can train it at home as well. So now I just want to give you a very short overview over our music therapy study, which was published this year in March. And we actually focused on CI recipients who were older than 65 years and who had a minimum of six months use. And we did a pre and post design with 11 CI recipients. And we even had a reference group of normal hearing people who did just one single evaluation. So all the CI recipients joined music therapy for 10 individual sessions. So you see here, we were using two questionnaires by Medel. The first one is the Hearing Implant Sound Quality Index, which is about the subjective sound quality. And the other one was the Munich Music Questionnaire, that's about music impression and music habits in everyday life before and after music therapy. To get data about the quality of life, for the change in quality of life, we used the Visual Analog Scale. And we did a music perception test to get objective data. And last but not least, we performed interviews with each CI recipient to get subjective opinions about the outcome of the music therapy sessions. So I just want to conclude. The interview showed that the music therapy was well-accepted and we had significant change in the Visual Analog Scale. We found significant decreased frustration and an increase, increased participation in social life. And we were very happy about that. And even significant better sound quality after music therapy. And the music perception was even, there was even a trend towards better music perception and also an increased enjoyment of music. So just to give you a short insight into my work here in Austria. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wirtner, for sharing your work and activities. And we will get to more questions later. Just wanted to share that we are receiving some comments in the chat, that it's, you know, really terrific that your clinic offers music therapy for cochlear implant users. And that was shared, this comment was shared by a cochlear implant user herself. So I think we would like to see that in other clinics as well. I would like to introduce our third speaker for today. And this is Bastian Senek, who is the co-founder and CEO of Melodia. I don't know if you heard about Melodia yet, but if not, you will hear a lot more about it in the coming months and years. Melodia and Medel have been working together. We have an ongoing collaboration and starting a promotion. And what that is, Bastian will share it with you. So Bastian, please take it away.
Thank you very much, Johanna. Hello, everyone. Very happy to be presenting Melodia at the Music Festival by Medel. So very quickly, basically, our objective with Melodia and the collaboration with Medel is to improve cochlear implant users' music abilities and enjoyment. I would like to start with a quick overview of our platform, where does it come from and how we created it. So basically, all comes from Vincent Chantry, who is the co-founder of Melodia with me. He's been a music teacher for more than 30 years and he's been training and coaching more than 3,000 musicians, mostly normal hearing musicians. He also had a tympanopathy from the age of 17, suffers from hearing loss. So he's always been very attuned to hearing impairments. What he's been creating with Melodia over his career is a clear pathway in order to create the possibility for the mind, for the brain, to listen to music and to perceive music step by step in a more and more encompassing way. So that's this pedagogical expertise, which is at the core of what we've built. What we've built then is a web application to, for anyone to improve their music perception and enjoyment. It's a training platform with very progressive exercises, starting at a very low level. Everybody can start. Cochlear implant users from all levels can start the most easy exercises and make some progress by building their inner perception of music step by step. And of course, it can come as a complement to music therapy or music training, but it's something they can do at home and they can do it autonomously, which we believe is a very important aspect. The last thing I wanted to talk about with Melodia is that it's, we believe, a very good platform for research. We have more than 100,000 users. We have generated more than 1 million sounds into the platform. And so we have quite a direct insight on how the brain learns the fundamentals of music, how the brain builds its own perception of music. And we are improving the platform continuously, which enable us to see what are the different steps, what are the different limitations that need to be overcome in order to improve music perception. And that works for cochlear implant users. It works also as well for normal hearing users. So basically, to get into concrete, what can Melodia improve for CI users? There are some things that we've already proved. There are something that we want to prove in the future. And for that, we're very grateful. We're working with Medel on a daily basis. So main things are about music perception, of course, music recognition, music discrimination. But also, and we believe it's a very important point for cochlear implant users, about attention and focus related to listening. How long can you focus on an auditory input? Then perception of speech in noisy backgrounds. I'll get back to that in a minute. Auditory working memory and music enjoyment. Just to focus on perception of speech in noisy backgrounds. What's interesting in music is that at a single moment, many instruments can play at the same time, right? And we can use the fact that this is possible in music. This is not really possible in speech if you are in a room with so many people speaking at the same time. It could be much more complicated to understand. But in music, we can have those different instruments played at the same time. And with Melodia, we have created some exercises where we can actually train the user to focus on one particular frequency and to distinguish between two frequencies or three frequencies played at the same time and to be able to tune in to the middle one or the high one or the low one. And this is, we believe, a very good skill for them adjusting into a noisy setting and being able to focus on the voice of one person or another person, for example. The related studies so far, we quoted here three studies. I will focus on Charles Lim's studies, published in 2019, and on Johanna Boyer's study, published in 2022. Those two studies have shown, first, that every cochlear implant user can start Melodia, that the first exercises are easy enough for people to start playing it. And second, that with the pathway of the exercises, they can actually make progress. So some exercises that they had some difficulty on the first trial. For example, after a few times, they can actually make them. And those skills are then integrated very deeply. Of course, there are so many things, as I said, that we want to prove, notably the transfer effects and so many other things that are gonna come into the future. So we are really, really excited about the collaboration with Medel for that in particular. How to access and how to use Melodia? So I'm very happy to announce, even if Dr. Horschmeyer announced it this morning, that Melodia is free of access for all MyMedel users, starting today. And everybody who's connecting through their MyMedel account can actually take advantage of the 12 months free Melodia access. There is a URL that you can see here. I'm sure there is also a link into the MyMedel website. So we're very excited to announce that. Not only because, of course, every cochlear implant user who's using Medel can access Melodia for free and can benefit from that, but also because it would be such a massive amount of feedback and improvement into the future. So it's like writing history in terms of number of users. And as we know, for every digital platform, having users giving some feedback, very particular users like cochlear implant users, would be very useful to build the future of music rehabilitation. Now, very quickly, recommended usage. We recommend four to five times a week, if possible. Not necessarily every day of the year. It can be one month, for example, regular practice. Then they can be opposed. Then there can be one month again later. The idea is that it needs to remain a pleasure. And in Melodia, even if I didn't have the time here to show, but we try to make the platform as user-friendly as possible, as intuitive and as fun as possible. It needs to remain a pleasure. Short sessions are the most efficient, not more than 20 minutes. So we really look forward to receiving some feedback from the cochlear implant users on this matter. And finally, what we recommend, which is very important, is to try to listen to music before and after playing Melodia. Because by doing that, cochlear implant users might see and perceive a difference in their listening to music. And it might help the brain have those transfer effects into a different perception of music being built. And that's it for now. Thank you very much and looking forward to it.
Thank you, Bastian, for introducing Melodia to us. And I would just like to repeat one more time that as of today, Melodia is available. For the coming year, Medel will offer free, unlimited 12 months licenses for music training with Melodia that can be started at any time in the coming year and lasts for 12 months. And this is through our platform, MyMedel. So all MyMedel account users, this includes all hearing implant users, all caregivers, parents, all professionals, all of you can access it. Unfortunately, I have to provide here a disclaimer. We had to exclude the United States and Canada and Japan from this promotion due to legal restrictions. But you can still access Melodia and purchase a license for yourself, the usual way. It's not that you could never access Melodia. So I'm really excited about this promotion. And again, thank you, Bastian, for introducing Melodia to us. And now I would like to lead into our roundtable discussion. And I'm just gonna, as the moderator, having the privilege to maybe start with one of my own questions and then sharing more questions from the audience. So please start typing in your questions in the chat. And now I will pick it up. So let me start by going back to... So let me start by going back to music therapy. And Bianca, maybe you can briefly summarize again the rehab process within music therapy with cochlear implant users. And I saw earlier a comment from Kate Feller about that it's wonderful to offer music therapy to adults because, I guess, compared to children, that you see that maybe even more rarely. So you offer music therapy instantly to adults and children, I believe, correct? Maybe you can briefly summarize again the rehab process within music therapy for CI users.
Okay. Yeah, we have all ages. My youngest patient is, I think, one year old. The oldest one is ninety or ninety-one, so it's a huge range. And yeah, well, first of all, I have, I meet them actually one week after the first activation. And we have this very important first therapeutic talk where I've tried to figure out how I can support them on those level I've been talking about. And I really try to make it very individual and I try to tailor each music therapy for each CI user. So when we have this first meeting, after one month, we already start improvisational music. We are doing music together. I work with sounds and with different noises and differentiation of sounds. And it's a very active session mostly. And then after three months, we already use a lot of songs. I'm a fan of nursery rhymes because a lot of our patients have their memories from their childhood and they remember the lyrics and we work on speech perception as well. So we have music perception and speech perception. And then after six months, well, they get a little bit difficult, more difficult. And at home, we want or we tell them, please practice and please use digital media. And they really, we really see from the first to the sixth month, if they're really practicing hard, there is a benefit, yeah? And then I see them again after one year. And that's almost the last session. And there we are talking about the goals they have achieved or even the challenges. There are always challenges in life. And as I said before, I always try to have this holistic way. You know, I just want them to feel safe in music therapy, that they have like a room where they can talk, where they can sing, because it's always very difficult for a lot of my patients. And for the children, it's more like playful. They don't have high expectations. I mean, as a child, you don't have such a high expectation. So it's more like a playful therapy. And we sing and we dance and we make little shows. So yeah, that's the main difference, I think.
Okay. And you mentioned earlier that you direct your patients towards apps and towards basically practice music at home. And so my follow-up question to all three of you is, you know, considering that music therapists and centers, you know, are not always, are not very often included. You don't see many centers that have a dedicated music therapist. So what would be your recommendation for clinics that don't have a music therapist? How to approach music rehabilitation, music training, music engagement? What would be your recommendation? And this is a question to all of you, Bianca and Ms. Veltner and Professor Skosinski.
Where shall I start?
Yes.
Well, I think our speech therapists and audiologists, they are mainly in this part or in this area, in this working field. They have a lot of knowledge and I learned a lot from them as well. And you have to be motivated to find and search by yourself and to have to connect with people like with Medel. We get recommendations. Otherwise, I wouldn't know Meludia or Listen Up apps or anything. So it's a lot about networking, I think, as well.
Okay, so basically, if I understand you correctly, you would encourage other professionals to communicate with their Medel representative to learn about what are all resources that I can share with my patients?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Professor Skosinski.
Yeah, maybe I will tell something, but it's a little bit controversial because when you go back ten years, fifteen years back, twenty years back, a lot of people connected with, let's say, deaf society, people were a little bit against cochlear implantation. You know, this is, it happened. I remember my father did first implantation in nineteen ninety-two. A lot of people were against it, it's nonsense, also partial deafness. And I see that people, they lose a little bit market for their services, but now they're going back to the fields because they can experience with music and they try to be in the field. So in my opinion, this is wonderful that we have other specialists because, you know, the demand for the, that what we can achieve from cochlear implant is more and more. You know, ten years back, fifteen years back, the awareness about that was not as huge as it's now. We really now expect speech understanding. We have sentence tests, we have much more, you know, tools to see what we can achieve with implants. And also, there is more and more patients with implantation in some part of residual hearing. So also, we need other people, not only doctors, not only typical rehabilitation in hospital, but other people from the other field. So it's wonderful that a lot of people, when we make that piece of cochlear, they can be people who are speech therapists, they are musicologists, they are people totally with different background of the university. And they try to show that what they have for other people. So it's wonderful. And also, I think that we don't lose people from the field of rehabilitation, but we have people who had some other experience. They know how it was earlier. When we're happy that somebody understands, you know, in fifteen percent. Now, we have people who really want to have one hundred percent in quiet, you know, in noise. And I think one thing we need to underline, the typical music therapy, which is used by different specialists with people with some residual hearing should be performed after, I think, maybe not earlier than six or twelve months after surgery because sometimes we need to make the proper fitting. Sometimes we need to adjust the programs to the healing to make it optimal. So sometimes I recommend with therapy, to wait a little bit with typical therapy because sometimes it could be painful, especially for children. But the music, you know, activities could be, you know, from the beginning. And if we see that some, you know, patient is not, you know, not happy with that, it means that maybe we need to do some, you know, other fitting. And I observed that the patient after otosclerosis is NCI. So otosclerosis is not possible for making staphylococcus. We have some patients when we need to turn off the first channels in the basic term. And then it takes some more time to, you know, to have fun from the music. This is my insight for the discussion.
Bianca, do you agree with that? Should we wait with music therapy? I mean, I'm sure there may be specific medical cases that are exceptions and also music therapy or music in general is maybe not a priority to everyone. But so Bianca, do you agree? Should we wait with music therapy? Or? And is music therapy or is music rehabilitation in whatever form? Is that for everyone, for every cochlear implant user?
Well, as I said before, yeah, the priority is mainly the speech perception. And that's the first thing they want to achieve. But I think, well, in our team, we try to make it like parallel. So we are doing settings together. Like we also do with the audiologist and the speech therapist. So I'm playing like on my musical instrument and the audiologist is changing, like working on his computer. So I think it should be like this, actually. It should be combined. I don't know. I'm always, in my opinion, you have to look individually if it's too early. And as I said, if it's a medical issue, of course. But in general, I don't think, I don't know. Everybody has the possibility to come and, as I said, it's voluntary and try it out and come to music therapy. And if it's too early, we see us again in two months or in three months. Yeah, so I think, yeah.
I have here also adding to this a question from Jocelyn Young, who's asking if you have a child with cochlear implants with special needs using therapy. Do you have children with special needs that come to music therapy?
At the moment, not, but yeah, we have from time to time, yeah.
And so I'm sure she's interested to hear about, you know, your experience there. Like, I think, what can the benefit be?
Well, I remember I made a lot of vibra acoustic therapy sessions because that's the advantage of music, right? You can't just hear it, you can feel it. And I was doing a lot about, she, this little girl, she was lying, I mean, she was lying on the floor and her mother said, can you please make her, let her move her hand more? And we were, we were like, yeah, experiencing. And we were exploring music and about vibration and with little egg shakers and percussion instruments. She really got her arm a little bit higher after twenty minutes. So that was very interesting. And I'm also learning in each session, from every patient, from every child, from every CI user, how they experience it. So that was very interesting. But it was a lot about the body, very much about the body, yeah.
Okay, I can see in the chat, there are a lot of questions about Meludia and I want to go into that in just a minute. But before, I'd like to ask more about the benefits that you have experienced. Like, what are, Bianca, Professor Skosinski, what are the most obvious benefits that you have observed in your patients because of being active in music, due to music therapy or due to music activities or due to beats of cochlear?
Yeah, you know, you asked the question, which the people from our team are sometimes not happy that I'm asking them because a lot of people are talking, because we are doing music therapy trainings. And I ask them, okay, but if you would like to make publication, let's make start points, what we have zero and in a measurement scale, what we can achieve. And achievement, which was mentioned earlier, was that because of music therapy, we want to more use the e-plant and we could have better speech understanding and we could make it parallel. It's great. And for example, that we can achieve very faster. For example, in patients with Usher syndrome, we have not only hearing, but also, you know, the blindness and there are other symptoms, it's wonderful. And that's special needs, they are very good categories that we can have. Other issue is the development and the better marks in school. We have not, there are some questionnaires, but honestly, if you ask me, I didn't receive from our team anyone and I don't have anyone which is routinely used in all the patients in music therapy. There's a lot of different issue. I remember the conference, it was in Montreal some years ago. There was discussion and I think they have no consensus yet, but there are people who are having that questionnaires. Also companies like Medel support people in that. And I believe that in some years, we would have benefits that we could make, you know, like you have little ears, for example, in small children, that we could have something like a tool where we could analyze. I think some people, the beats of cochlear, people who are that in better behavior, let's say, and better marks in school are very much connected and people could be focused on any task. So it's something which is really important and we see that. And this is especially better in children with some specialties. There are Tardis syndrome, there are Treacherly Colles, very advanced. They are, you know, Usher, Wardenburg. When we know before the surgery, the results could be a little bit worse than in regular patients, for example, conitard GHB2. But then we need to attract that patient to come to the hospital and to do something with therapy. So we try to make, you know, different therapies with special people on that. So if you ask me honestly, I have no, you know, measurement benefits, but I try to see how that works. And for example, it's also reflected in patients with better speech understanding in noise. So if you have patients with better music perception, better training, they are more aware about, you know, physical, the processor, and you have better speech understanding in noise. And this is something for me is extremely important. For example, the report from the visit of the specialist, the patient is making music therapy in our clinic or somewhere else. So he was on the, some campus, which we organize sometimes, the Baltic Sea. And there is more perception, better score in the children on the different questionnaires. For example, we also could make an ABH test. We can, in ABH test, aversiveness is much better in that, you know, formula. And background noise also is better. So there is less problem. So it works for me as a surgeon, so that's what I can tell about.
Thank you, Professor Skosinski. Miss, now I'm switching to German here, I'm sorry. I guess my address here just, you know, comes to me. Ms. Veltner, so you were reporting earlier about the study that was published from your clinic this year. And we got a question from Daniel Putter about if you had a control group, which I believe, yes, you had, you had a normal hearing control group of ten, of an N of ten, right? That were evaluated once. And I don't know if you want to go in more detail there or maybe share more of your observations as well in terms of benefits. But if you also want to read these studies, we can maybe share the links or references. I think you will definitely find it. Can you remind us, please, what's the title of the?
Improved Music Perception After Music Therapy.
Okay, then.
But I can put it in the chat afterwards.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So we shared a reference, we know there was a control group. And now, do you have any other, anything else you would like to add in terms of the benefits that you observe? Maybe even in your daily sessions that you see?
Yeah, I mean, in general, I think, yeah, there's the music perception getting better. And I could tell you about the benefits we found in our study. But I just thought, maybe I tell you about the patient. He's like a music professional and he's eighty years old and he got the first implant last year. And he came in the first setting with his mobile phone and he had a translation app on it because he couldn't hear anything. Yeah, he was absolutely deaf. And he told me his expectation is like he wants to get back to his professional music life. And first of all, I felt like, wow, okay, it's a very high expectation, but we'll see. I support you. And you know what? He is so happy now. After one year, he really trained a lot. And he got so proud of the first time that he could hear his guitar and his other instruments again. He fell in love again after six months because he could communicate again. And now, after one year, it's the first performance in front of an audience. So that was really great to accompany, actually. We practiced and he wanted to see an objective outcome. So we did some musical tests. It was a little bit like the Listen Up app. And we were doing this test every three months. And he got so, you know, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety percent. And a few months ago, he got his second CI. And you know, that's like the most beautiful benefit. If they are happy, if they are proud, if they're self-confident again, if they have the self-awareness and improved music perception is great, actually.
Yeah, so what I hear from you is that there are various benefits, different types of benefits of music perception itself, of emotional, social benefits. Confidence is something I think we in our field talk a lot about. And then even performance. Okay, Bastien, you've had the chance to see some of the Medel performers, or I said, some of our users who performed at the Grand Finale in Vienna last week. You don't have so much, you're new to the cochlear implant field, but you've got the chance to see them live in action, performing on stage. And some of them knew Meludia before and have practiced Meludia and talked about in their videos how it helped them to practice music. So what benefit particularly did you see there? How was this experience?
This experience was amazing. And I think there are lots of received ideas, like wrong ideas about cochlear implant users, at least for me. At least for me, I was very impressed right now with the tuning. I can't say it was like one hundred percent perfect at every time, etc., but it was very well tuned most of the time.
So they had a good intonation when they were performing individually or even as group?
Exactly, exactly. I was not very worried about rhythm and tempo because we know that's, that's something which is, which can be very quite strong and, and with the performance of cochlear implants now. But about the intonation, yes, definitely. And I'm sure there's lots of dedication, lots of work, but that's possible. And that's such a beautiful and powerful message to send to the world.
Yeah, and on Saturday, you all will be able to see the Grand Finale, which will be broadcasted globally. So if you're interested, please check out our Medel Music Festival Sound Sensation, all the events that are provided. Now, moving to some of the more Melodia-specific questions, I will mention a few because there, and you can answer all of them, I'm sure, sure. Just give me one second. Okay, I, I remember there were some questions about app format. I know Melodia is a web application that is optimized for computer laptops, tablets. Right, Bastien?
Exactly. I can see, I can see the questions. If you want, I can try to just make a rally with all of them if you, if you prefer.
Please, yes.
Good, so an app for smartphones. I mean, the, the partnership with Medel and the way we worked on the exercises is singularly for the web application of Melodia. Now, Wolfgang asked, does Melodia train pitch discrimination? Yes, we do. We have some specific exercises. I think I mentioned one in our, in the presentation when we have, for example, two notes, all three notes, and one note is repeated and you have to know which note it is. So it helps the brain learn how to discriminate different sounds played at the same time. We also have some exercises about vertical density, like how many sounds are played at the same time, which is very useful for pitch discrimination. Alex Maybus asked, does Melodia incorporate any active music training activities or is it more receptive or passive? It's more active, Alex. What's happening in Melodia is that there is a sound being given and you have to actively answer a question. So it's not active in terms of you have to sing it back or you have to play it back, but you have to choose, you have to actively listen and answer a question. I hope it answers your question.
Yes, and I encourage all professionals to go on MyMedel and try out Melodia, try it out for yourself.
And then I see Alex asked, how old should a patient be for using Melodia? So we have, we are sure that from the age of seven, they can use it autonomously. We had some very successful experiments and testing with children from five and six years old, but usually it requires someone playing with the child and asking the question and reading the question and organizing, like for example, listening before the exercise. Okay, this is something going up, this is something going down and helping the child enter and understand the exercise.
So Melodia could also be used to, with a parent together with their child?
That's the most, that, I mean, using it with a parent, even for a child seven, eight or nine-year-old is the best thing to do because also, you know, music, we, we talked about the benefits of music rehabilitation. We believe in Melodia that the sensation, the link to the sensation, the link to the emotion, but also the social dynamic of music is very important in the rehabilitation process. And, and yeah, playing with a parent, we think is very important, or with a brother, or with a friend, whatever. And I don't see any other question, am I wrong?
Maybe not, is there a, no, not that question. Okay, um. We have three minutes left. Are there any other questions from the audience? If not, I would like to circle back to the video I shared at the very beginning and ask Ms. Veltner if, to share a little bit about your experience and your observations when we conducted together the choir workshop with cochlear implant users. What do you think is most notable to you from this experience?
Well, first of all, it was a very, really very nice experience for the first time. It was the first time for me as well. And while the group was very, we had like advanced singers, we had, we had beginners. And yeah, I, I think there was improvement also very in a very special, individual way. Like this one guy who told us in, in the, at the first setting, he said like, you know, I don't know if I even can sing or if, if I even dare to sing in front of a group or anything. And at the end of the, of the last day, we had a little show. And at the show, he was like performing in front of the whole group in this trio of men. So he was also so proud, wasn't he? So he was standing in front of everyone. So I think it was, for us, it was never about, you know, pressure or it was never about this perfect result at the end. It was like get the feeling of singing in the group together, have this experience, explore music.
Yeah, our, our main goal was that to enjoy singing.
And they enjoyed it, I think, and we did too.
Yes, absolutely. Well, thank you all so much for, a big thank you to the speakers for your engagement, for your, for joining us, for your, sharing your expertise, for your willingness to participate in this session and all the preparations you have done. Thank you so much. And thank you to our audience, to our participants and joining us for the session, for your questions, for your inputs. I will end now this third session of the Experts Online Music Special and I really want to encourage you to check out all the different events on the Medel Music Festival website and see some of the Medel users perform. I think the next daily music dose will be from Italy that is coming up. So again, thank you all for joining us today and I hope you will have a good rest of your week and enjoy music. Thank you.